Mr. Iden?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
Hey, do I have a nomination for president for 2020?
I move, we have Jen Carrier.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Steph.
So, Minda and Steph. Any other nominations? Just tried.
Nice drop.
Okay, roll call, please.
Okay. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. uh, Mrs. Carrier?
Abstain.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes.
The motion carries forward with one abstention. Do we have a nomination for vice president?
I'm fine doing it, I'm okay with that, I mean, that's...
Okay, I'll nominate Craig Iden.
I'll second.
So, Minda and Galen. To appoint Craig Iden as vice president, roll call, please.
All right. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Abstain.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And, uh, Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. So passes four with one abstention, motion carries. Next, we need to appoint a liaison to the OSBA conference for 2020.
I'll probably go this year, but I mean, I didn't, I didn't go last year, but if somebody else wants to do it, by all means.
No, feel free. I move that Craig does it.
I'll second.
So, move by Steph, second by Galen, to appoint Craig as our legislative liaison to OSBA for 2020. Roll call, please.
Okay. Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Abstain.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And, um, Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion carries for yes, one abstention. Um, next is to appoint a student achievement liaison for 2020.
Ken, I'm willing to do that, 'cause I'm the only one of us that's available, kind of during the school day. They're generally meeting when I'm like 3:30. Like, right after school, like 3:15 or...
I'll appoint Minda, then.
You'll move to appoint Minda, or you just taking presidential privilege, or what?
I'm sorry, I move. I'll move on that.
So you move, and I'll second.
Okay, great. So Jen moves, Craig second to appoint Minda as a student achievement. Um, roll call, please.
Okay. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Abstain.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one, I'm sorry, four with one abstention. Next, we need to appoint our athletic council representative for 2020.
Steph, are you, will you continue to do it?
Yeah. Okay. I'll move that we appoint Steph.
I'll second.
So, Minda and Craig to appoint Steph as the athletic council representative for 2020, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Abstain.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Passes four with one abstention. Um, next is to appoint our tax incentive review committee representative for 2020.
That's you, correct.
We're so thankful you do that.
It's a wonderful meeting. Just saying.
Okay, so I'll move that we appoint Keith to do that.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Steph? Minda and Steph to appoint Keith as our tax incentive representative. Roll call, please.
Okay. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
I'm sorry, wrote it down wrong. Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Uh, motion carries four...
Five.
Five to one, five to zero. Sorry, I was writing a note. Okay, now to establish our regular meeting date and time and place for 2020. Do we want to continue to have it on the third Monday of the month at 5:30?
I'll move. I'll second.
Galen and Craig? Move to have our regular board meeting on the third Monday of each month at 5:30 here in the community room. Roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Now, adoption of the following standing authorizations. Authorized to waive the reading of the board minutes unless otherwise requested by a board member. Authorized treasurer to secure advances from the auditor when funds are available and payable to the school district. Authorized treasurer to invest any inactive funds at the most productive interest rate. Authorized treasurer to pay all bills within the limits of the appropriation resolution and make appropriation modifications as needed. Authorized the superintendent to employ such temporary personnel as is needed for emergency situations. And authorize the superintendent to serve as a purchasing agent for the school district. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Minda, Galen? And roll call.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. So, we need to move to adjourn this meeting until our next regular meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Immediately. Okay, move by Craig.
Worries past it then. I'll second.
Seconded by Minda? Until a minute from now.
Yeah.
Do we need roll call?
The, well, yeah, um...
Well, let's have roll call.
Mrs. Iden? Mr. Iden? Sorry?
That's fine, yes.
Uh, Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. So, passes five to zero. Okay. And now, we're gonna call the regular meeting to order, and roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mr. Iden?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mazur?
Still here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
We, it, I mean, in the future, if we want to just, just stop the one and roll into the next, a lot of school districts do it that way.
That would be good.
So, we could do that. Okay.
All right, well, no current visitors, we've already done the pledge, so we're moving right along to technology report.
Flying.
Not a couple months since I've been over. We've reached a quiet point in time of the year, I'll say that knock on wood. Semesters are changing, and state testing's around the corner. Over Christmas break, Milwaukee upgraded our power school server, and there were a couple growing pains until all the data was moved from one point to the other. It's been a while since that's been done, so it's actually been a good thing overall. And so far, everything with that project seems to be good once they got it on the final production equipment. I don't know if Ryan Hevick's with there, you guys were in change though. So, most of the other districts in the north, let's go by the word, you wait. Most of the, uh, other districts were fighting with the equipment a little bit, and it's better at this point. The Hicksville steam program is looking to expand into a new area. It's the esports arena. If you watch the newspapers, many districts around are in that zone and moving. I had a chance to sit down with Mr. Farrell today and talk with him a little bit about it. He told me the funds were coming from a state wellness fund, so, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that comes out of our general fund, Mike.
Correct.
So, that's a good thing. The equipment we purchased is very compatible, if this does not work out the way we expected, we can reutilize it for something else. The plan is for it to be an after-school program, and it's to better connect our students and meet the needs of our student population overall. The main tool that we're using for focus is the esports website, so it's kind of a curriculum that's designed to help move everybody in the right direction. And they're very, very early in the, in the process, the equipment's been purchased. We know there's some people that are very interested in it, because we've not even officially made it, made the announcement yet, and he's already gotten some contacts from parents and students and, and whatnot.
Is that what we saw in Ford County?
That's what I wondered, yeah.
I'm pretty sure Ford County and theirs, I know Hilltop at my, my son's school, they have it as well, it's a very popular thing, and it's meeting a need that, um, maybe students that are not physically good at sports, but are very good at gaming. It's, it's not a bad thing overall. Again, right now, we're looking at the club format, not necessarily a true-on sports and all the things that go along with that, but more details are gonna come along as we mature this. Right now, we're just building it out at this point, and I'm gonna see if I can't get Nathan in here for an end of the year. This is where we're going with steam and for the next school year, so I'll push him for that. Last but not least, we've hit semester time, official grades will be posted on Thursday morning, and I grabbed a little stat sheet, because I'm kind of a stats guy. And there are three major ways parents and students can get grades. One is through the application on your phone, another is directly through the website. And just for fun, I did a little looking to compare what's more popular, and with parents, they like the app for their phone, and for students, they like the website. And just to throw a couple numbers at you, 12,477 individual logins happened on the app for the year, and 55,595 logins have happened on the website. To check the students' grades. That's a lot of logins. And on average, that's 482 sign-ins per day, including Saturday and Sunday.
Wow.
That is really good.
It is great.
And I would say on the high school side, you know, um, it's amazing how often kids truly are checking their own grades. That's, that's probably why they use the, the website so much.
Absolutely.
They're constantly on there, and their supervisor's in their classes checking grades, seeing what's missing, things like that, so...
That, Mr. Slattery, that students have their phones out during the school day, it's very, very frowned upon. If the kids have their apps out.
Oh, I didn't think about that.
Yeah. The laptop's not a problem. And that's all for me. If you have any questions?
Put your microphone on.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Um, I also have Mr. Hunter's notes as well. And we have some upcoming state assessments, um, in February coming up. Our third grade students, um, those students that did not reach the scaled score of 683, or the reading sub-score of 46, will be taking the Terranova in February. This will give them another opportunity before the spring test, um, in April, and we have 16 students that will be taking that test. Also in February, our ELL students will be taking their state mandated test, the Owelpa. This is a test that consists of four domains, um, that they have to reach a five in each domain in order to be considered proficient, and we have 26 students in kindergarten through ninth grade taking that test. And all 76 second grade students will be gifted testing the first two weeks of February, so we've got a lot of assessments coming up in the elementary. Something that we're trying to focus on the second semester is, you might have been seeing some, uh, Facebook posts of positive office referrals. And I've talked about the PBIS, um, that the state is mandating us, you know, trying positive approaches towards the school environment, and, um, the one thing that we started in the fall was the golden tray. In the cafeteria, we tried to focus on the cafeteria, um, with the expectations there, and awarding specific classes with a golden tray weekly, and then specific grade, or, yeah, specific grade levels with Friday Five. So, we're gonna kind of switch that up the second semester and actually do a grade level that will get the golden tray, and it's, it's, um, outside of the, right beside the student of the month board in that little window of Mrs. Slattery's office, you'll see a golden tray with a, a little tag with two across it, 'cause the second grade won last week, so then they will also win the Friday, they also won five more minutes of recess today. So, we've changed that up a bit. And one of the things I've kind of encouraged the teachers in collaboration is to be sending students down to the office for positive things, and so we make a big deal, sign their little certificate, take a picture for Facebook. So, that's what we're focusing on the second semester. So, that's about it from the elementary. Do you want Mr. Hunter's?
Mm-hmm.
In the middle school? January 21st is the county spelling bee at Irisville. We have Brianna Scheible and Noah Harmon that will be representing Hicksville for us. With the end of the nine weeks, um, he's encouraged parents to log into their child's power school to see their grades. Junior high girls' basketball season is wrapping up, our girls will play in the GMC tournament at Wayne Trace this weekend, on the 18th. Good luck to the girls, and congratulations on their season. And lastly, they have started to meet and have basic scheduling discussions for the next school year, so students and parents will be making class selections and beginning the process of next school year over this next month. It's middle school news.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Slattery?
All right, thank you. Uh, the, on December 17th, uh, we have the Winter Band Choir concert, Zach Colmeyer and Lynn Rodish, they did a great job preparing and performing for our community, and I just wanna make sure we thank them, and of course, thank our students for that performance. On December 20th, I wanna say congratulations to our Lady Aces basketball team and their coaches for winning their fifth consecutive Route 49 classic championship.
Not consecutive, they didn't get it last year.
Oh, well, I was told fifth, I apologize.
It's the fifth one they've won, it's just not consecutive.
I apologize, yes, you're right, so, um...
Oh, I like you.
I wish I was right, it sounded weird, but hey, believe that, make sure you put everyone five in a row, no one will... Special recognition to our three Lady Aces that made the alternate team, Molly Crowell, Kenzie Schrader, and Avery Slattery. I, I think, uh, it's not that I was surprised, but I think our girls just had a really good weekend, they played hard, they played as a team, and it was great to watch them do that. Christmas break, of course, took place from December 23rd through January 1st, um, of course, our students returned last week, and that short week. Lot going on here, of course, this first full week back last week, um, you know, it was the end of the second quarter, uh, into the semester, so a lot of catching up, a lot of finalizing, so we appreciate all of the hard work, uh, from our students, and of course, our staff coming back from that long break. On January 6th, that first full week back, our juniors and seniors, they completed the Ohio State mandated end-of-course assessment retakes. We have a handful of students here at Hicksville that are juniors and seniors that we are monitoring to make sure they get those end-of-course points. Again, as of right now, uh, you have to have 18 of those points to be able to graduate, and that pretty much affected our classic 2020 and classic 2021 students. If those scores are not where they need to be after this retake session, of course, they have the opportunity this spring to retake tests again. And of course, this summer, if necessary, and we've never had to do that. I do wanna thank Ford County Career Center, because I know we have a handful of kids over there that also had to do, to retakes, and, um, I feel bad for, uh, for Tammy Kudus over there, so a shout-out to Tammy Kudus, because she works with 22 different districts, and the students that they have, and trying to get all the points organized and to understand who needs to be tested in what areas, so, we appreciate that help. I also wanna thank Josh Clark, he assisted us with, with testing, he actually did the testing one-to-one in small group, which saved, um, our counseling, uh, department, and of course, uh, the administrative department time, and doing some other duties each day. On 1/10, uh, we wanna thank Slattery Oil for donating pizza cookies and pop to our middle school and high school, uh, second quarter students that received, uh, student of the quarter, and of course, Mrs. Leon for organizing that event, uh, we appreciate all our hard work in doing that. As Mrs. Kaufman said, uh, the end of the first, excuse me, end of the first semester, and of course, the second quarter occurred on the 10th, um, it's amazing, we're halfway through the school year again already, already. I wanna reiterate what she said, um, you know, grades will be finalized on, I believe, Thursday, typically, we send out an instant alert on Friday, um, advertising to the parents, saying, you know, look for your student's grade card if they're K-4. If you want a hard copy, if you're in grade 512, they can request a hard copy that we will print off and give the students to take home. But as Mr. Kaufman said, you know, majority of our kids, I mean, it's, it's a, our schools are living documents, you know, our, our parents and our students are checking grades daily, if not weekly, um, it's not a necessary thing to do, in fact, I believe last quarter, I think we had four requests out of our 300 kids on the high school side for a hard copy. So, it seems to be working, I know, anytime you make a change like that, like we did like three years ago, you ask people questioning it, but it seems to be working, and I'm glad to hear some of those numbers that you presented to us tonight. We continue to prepare for upcoming spring testing in the middle school and high school, um, we will begin that testing, um, after spring break, in fact, I think it's, there's a full week of school, and then we start the testing the second week after spring break. But, um, all testing dates are on our, our school calendar, not the district calendar, um, we're looking to get a document out to parents that way they're aware of when their students will be testing, because I know that people have, I mean, I'd say vacations and things, but you know, everybody's, everybody's busy, and we wanna make sure they're aware of when their students are testing, because the best thing that can happen is your students are in this building today, we test to the masses, and that's always our goal. Teacher evaluations, K through 12, we're all being administered, we complete each week, I know that, uh, we're all working on our second round of those, um, it can be time-consuming, and we appreciate, uh, the flexibility of our staff, and of course, I know, you know, not to speak for Mrs. Kaufman and Mr. Hunter, but, uh, a lot of times, you know, we, we are not the keepers of our time, that's what I always tell people. You know, we don't know what's gonna walk through the door, we don't know what's gonna happen in the classroom, we don't know what's gonna happen outside of the school, it affects our time, so again, we always appreciate the flexibility of our staff to allow us to, to move pre-conferences, observation times, post-conferences, all that fun stuff. And then, of course, um, I don't wanna leave out, um, you know, our Christmas donations and what happens in this building, uh, during the month of December is pretty amazing, and I, I wanna make sure that, you know, individuals in our community come to us and say, hey, who can we help, who needs help, what do you guys need for your students? And we appreciate those individuals, we have multiple businesses in our community that, um, make donations of coats, hats, scarves, you know, gloves, all kinds of things, and then, of course, you know, you think of our staff at Hicksville, and again, not just the teachers, but our entire staff, um, you know, you're classified, you're certified, you know, administrators, teachers, everyone, you know, we do a lot of adoption programs here with individual students and families, and it's just, it's just great to know that we have a school that wants to, you know, provide, you know, again, a great Christmas to many of our students and their families, so thank you for everyone who made the donation.
Thank you for reminding us of what a great community we have and how much they do donate, and we are very appreciative, so... Ford County report? Did anyone provide anything? Okay, so we don't have a Ford County report today, so, Mr. Hunter?
Well, it's been pretty light, because our last board meeting was right before, uh, spring break, so, uh... And then we had Christmas break. My biggest, uh, uh, what'd I say?
We're at spring break.
Spring break. I'm dreaming, that's right. They brought spring break up earlier, and yeah. You're counting?
I got an app.
Christmas break. So, uh, my biggest update is on the building project, uh, just to kind of let you know where we're at in the community, now, I know I updated the staff here a week or so ago, but, um, the building, uh, project, I received the construction documents and the blueprints, they're right over there, so the two manuals go along and explain, uh, what's, you know, in the blueprints and stuff, too. Eric and John and I took a look at all those, uh, through the blueprints, and then Eric actually went through and made a list of a few things that he had some questions about, and shot those questions off to Rodney. The concerns that he had were real small, in fact, uh, minor, and, and they might even be addressed in the manuals, 'cause if you look at the manuals, they're pretty thick, we didn't go through those yet, so, um... Tomorrow, I should receive the construction document estimate. And then, a week from tomorrow, I should receive the estimate reconciliation. So, you remember that, uh, so tomorrow's kind of the, the architect's, uh, fine-tuning, so to speak, of the, uh, construction documents, and then what they do is they send it off to their estimator, who really hones in on what's inside the building to get that price more a, as accurate as they can in preparation for the bidding. So, we should receive that back next Tuesday, and that actually is the number that we really should be waiting for, is that one. So hopefully, the one we get tomorrow is wonderful, and then the one we get next week is even better. Once the board is satisfied with that, they're gonna need to approve those construction documents and authorize that release to the bidders. I did, uh, text with Rodney today, and, uh, assuming that timeline goes as I just said, then sometime next week, we'll have to have a quick meeting to, uh, approve, uh, the release to the bidders, okay?
So, how, how long will we have for the bids to be out?
A month. Yeah, approximately a month, Galen, I, I don't have those dates right in front of me, but it goes out like the 22nd of January, I think they're due back the 19th of February, they're open to the 19th, and that would happen most likely at noon, it's a real quick process. And then, a week later, uh, the board would hire a construction company, so when they are opened, what, uh, what will happen is the architects will take the, all those bids, and they'll take them back, and they go through, uh, the bids just to make sure that none of, nobody's forgotten anything, and, uh, they'll make a recommendation to you folks on who they, uh, would select, okay? So, given, since I mentioned that, if there are certain, uh, companies or construction companies that you wanna make sure that they know about this bidding process, we have some already that we, we've made a list of and given them to the architects, they will let them know, uh, so that they make sure that they get a packet and know about that. So, if there's someone special you want me to, uh, notify and get to Rodney, just let me know.
Would, would it be worth coming up with a marketing plan to get the word out to general contractors that this job's coming up for bids, so they have some time to plan for it?
Well, typically, I, I don't know, Galen, but I think typically, they watch, because this is the time of the year where they're lining up their spring and summer, so they follow all the architects around, and, um, you know, I, I don't know the, the answer to that.
A lot of them, that's the kind of their job, is to make sure they know every bid that's out there, so they can, you know, put in for it. Well, to get, I was just thinking in terms of getting as many bids as we can, so it's very competitive. Maybe we could shop that around, come up with a list?
Well, I don't, I can't tell you the names of the ones that I know Eric has already mentioned to Rodney to make sure that they know, so, uh, there's some, a handful already, I don't know how many, but...
Isn't it floating around in an email somewhere?
Might be.
It, it is.
I think so.
Couple different ones, yeah.
Because I'm still on that list for some reason, I think, so I...
And those bids are, uh, sealed, right?
Yes, and they, they sealed until...
We open them here?
When we open them, and they just open them, read the name of the, the company and the price, document it, and open up the next one, that's it. It's like a 15-minute process, depending on how many there are, and then there's no decision or anything made, and they take them and do what I already mentioned.
So, when we, when it, we get to the point, we look at the top three or four bidders, are we gonna basically interview them?
Yeah, ask, ask them to come in and sell themselves?
And have a face-to-face meeting with them?
I don't think that that's typically the process they do, or, for the, uh, construction company, the architect, yeah.
You get from my experience with related type of projects, yeah, I think the architect will review to see that what's in their bid documents is good, um, to see if there's any errors, or if they're missing anything, um, and then, if it all looks good, you know, it's awarded to the lowest... And then, if it all looks good, you know, it's awarded to the lowest, best bid. So there's, I've never seen it where you brought in contracts and contractors and interviewed them.
And any bids, I think, the way I understand it, any bids that come in higher than what this number is that we're going to get a week from tomorrow isn't even a consideration. It has to be at or lower than the number we get next week.
So yeah, that'll be a big number, I mean.
The big thing, yeah, yeah.
Somebody in the community hit me up the other day, and they said that they've heard some, I guess, some maybe frustrating comments from people wondering, what's this going to look like? Because they've been hearing about it for how long? And I understand why we were kind of holding back on the sketches, but I guess as soon as we came.
I'm glad you brought that up, Craig. I had somebody from our committee just contact me this week and ask about that, so I reached out to Rodney on that as well. And they're actually working on a drawing right now that we can post down in the comments that will show what the exterior is like, and I asked him also if he could include some things for the interior as well, so.
I didn't know if it would be something that you could include in an article?
Yeah, I can maybe do that, you know, get it reduced down.
It would be a stipulation of, you know what, this isn't set in stone, that we still have the bid process, we believe that this is what it's going to look like. But nothing's set in stone until the bids come back. You know, just something to, so people can look at it and say, okay, now this is where my money's going.
Right, well, that is what it will look like, what that, what the drawing is, because all the bidders or all the construction companies are bidding on that. That's the project they're bidding on, so they aren't going to change what is written on those blueprints.
At what point in time, if, you know, let's say they came back, you know, millions of dollars more than what we have, you know, at some point in time, they would have to go back and say, hey, you know what, we're going to have to make some changes. But I would think that that could be done after the bid is accepted, then we could make some changes if we needed to. Hopefully, that's not the case.
Well, changes aren't never good because changes cost. Yeah, so I think I talked about this maybe last month, I'm not sure, but we need to be patient and wait for this number that's coming up. There are some alternates that were, they pulled out. We talked about those alternates, and they did that at our last meeting that we, the group met. Am I correct, Galen? Were you there for that? And so they pulled out a lot of alternates because I was concerned about the price. And then we talked about that rough price that they had given us and that there are a lot of contingencies and stuff in there. All those contingencies hopefully are all going away right now, which is going to get that down to that number that we're all comfortable with and that we, you know, that we spoke about, so.
So when they open that envelope up in a week or two, that'll be at the point in time where if we say we got to make some changes, that's when that would come up at that stage of the game, not later.
Well, they're not going to be any higher than that number that we're going to get next week. So we're hoping, you know, obviously, that they're going to be, if they took out all the contingencies, we're already lower than the number that we wanted.
Perfect.
Because then we have to add some alternates.
Right, right. But actually, Minda, in looking at the things to the, that's one of the questions that Eric has for Rodney, is some of those things are back in there in the blueprints, so we're wondering if maybe.
They thought it would be okay.
Yeah, which would be a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't venture the bid process a lot, but never to this extent, I haven't, you know?
Well, we did it for the drive that we were supposed to open up in September, there were no bids, so we were all ready for somebody to walk in and give us them then. But I do remember, I think, if I remember back 11 years ago, we'd been in this building, actually, and so it would have been about probably 13 years ago that we went through that process with Kevin, and it, there was a room full of people. It was, because it, you know, this is a big, was a big project for the school, so I'm expecting several for this project as well. I mean, it's a 30-some thousand square foot addition, I think that's pretty big, and you know, I think you'll, I think you'll get adequate number of bids for the project. It should be okay.
Galen, I do remember, I went at Capitol Conference, I went to one of those sessions, I went out, was actually on the building process and getting things without a bid and stuff, and one of the things they did mention was that if you chose to go with somebody who was not the lowest bid, there's like a whole process that we would have to go through and certain steps that we would have to do and certain things that we would essentially have to justify and qualify on why we didn't. So just putting that out.
And the architects will help us through that whole process, yeah.
So backing up just a little bit, we got all the documentation from the architect on time and 100% complete, then?
Yes.
The law, back to that, Jen, the law states lowest, best bid. So if it's not the lowest bid, then there's steps that you have to partake to determine that it is the best.
The, we were to receive those, Galen, on the, they shipped them on the 20th, is when the date was, which if you remember, was our last day of school. For some reason, UPS, our building's open every day over break, and we're here every day. Well, I wasn't this year because I was, had a little sickness I had to go through, but anyhow, they wouldn't, UPS didn't deliver them, so actually, when we got back, I called Rodney and I was like, what's up? We were supposed to have those, and he contacted UPS and found out that they hadn't delivered it because they said that the business was closed, which we weren't, and said if it doesn't come tomorrow, then we'll have to contact the office, UPS. But it came that following day, so that would have been last week, and yeah, so we're good. We've got them. And yeah, so tomorrow, we're to receive, I'm to receive another number, and then another one a week from tomorrow. Okay? Any other questions on the building project? The other thing I wanted to mention, just mention, is that we're working, as the principal's already said, you know, we're already thinking about schedules and stuff for next year, the school calendar as well. So we're working on the school calendar. I can tell you, it's going to be very similar to what we did this year. We'll have two teacher days during fair week, and then school won't start until after the fair, so for students, so that's what we've done historically for years, so. Any questions on that part? Okay, then, the other part, as you know, January is School Board Recognition Month, and I put a little article in the paper on you guys' behalf, and you know, I just want to, I just want to say publicly, first of all, that people don't really realize how much time you guys put in, and there is a lot, it's more than just these meetings, and we've had a lot, you know, over the last couple of years and stuff, but we really do appreciate all that you do, especially with this building project, all the extra thought and care, you know, when it goes to the numbers and everything for this new building and everything is really important, and you guys are really in there digging in and helping us through that process, and we really appreciate it. So I have a couple of certificates, actually. One of them was from the governor that we could print out, so it's a School Board Recognition Month that I'll give to each of you. And then, there's also another one then that we could print out for your service to Hicksville Schools, so, well, it's all for Hicksville Schools, but, so thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith.
That one for Denny, so I'll make sure Denny gets one. As our representative for Four County. There we go.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Thanks again for all you do for us, we really do appreciate it. And then, as I said, I have a set here for Denny as our Four County representative, and I'll make sure he gets those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Changes? Oh, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Steph?
Second.
Galen? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mauser?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Minutes in financials, can we have a motion for that?
I'll move.
Thank you, Minda.
I'll second.
Craig? Minutes from the regular board meeting on December 16th, 2019. The treasurer's report, we have approved cash reconciliation as of December 2019. Approved financial statements for December 2019. Approved amended certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2020 as presented. A total general fund resources of $14,000,01,463.47 and total resources for all funds of $20,917,276.31. Approved fiscal year 2020 amended permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $10,745,645.51 and total appropriations for all funds Accept the following resolution as presented. Resolution number 2020-01. Resolution authorizing the school district to issue a tax exempt lease purchase obligations in a principal amount not to exceed $3,500,000 and to enter into a ground lease and a lease purchase agreement for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and equipping a new building for academic and athletic purposes as well as providing for roadway improvements. Accept the following donations. $100 from Candace Overmeyer for Noah Carrickson Scholarship Fund in memory of Denise Overmeyer, and $100 from Greg and Lisa Slattery to each of the football, boys' basketball, boys' baseball, volleyball, girls' basketball, and softball. $168 from Marland and Natasha Eicher for grade six camp. Any discussion?
Do you have a question?
On the, on the resolution 2021 in the fine print that we got on our other page, it just has the wrong time.
Yes.
Doesn't know if that matters.
That time will be updated. Our regular meetings turn at 5:40, so I will fix that, to state that. And a little bit about the resolution, it says amount not to exceed 3.5 million. It does not necessarily mean that's what we'll take out the lease purchase for. This here sets a limit, we can't take it out any more than that, but if it was going to be, if it becomes 3 million, we can do that. Or if it's a different figure, anything below, at or below 3.5 million. Currently, the interest rates are really strong, they're good, so hopefully, we hit the market at the right time, very competitive bids, and come out looking, you know, in a very good shape. I have had, I've talked to Mike Burns, he's with Baird, he's the underwriter or the agent for the process, and I've informed him that we want to make sure we include our local banks. He's got that written down, so he'll reach out, make sure he reaches out to our three local banks, but then he's going to expand it much larger in that, too, to add some larger banks and ones that he's had some recent success with and so forth. They will get on that as early as tomorrow. I will get the resolution to him, and then he'll take the next step as far as that goes. But I do have a schedule of things, that is for tomorrow. They will send out the bid information, they will also follow up once, two times more if they need to with various banks, and the goal right now, the schedule, is to close and receive the funds on March 10th.
Do we need to do anything as a board after this point between, I guess, then and March 10th? We don't have to approve or anything else?
No, as far as receiving the funds, I believe that's it. This is, this here allowing the transaction to occur.
And just as a curiosity, Mike, are the, are the banks limited to just those in the state of Ohio, or how many, how far out will they go to look for?
Some of the banks, I think, are outside of the state of Ohio, it'll be United States, but I don't know if there's a, you know, maybe the bank is in Pennsylvania, they have branches and offices and whatnot in Ohio, probably. Headquarters could be somewhere else.
Just curious, as to the scope?
So, yeah.
And just to mention, as always, our donations are incredible. Thanks to all those people that donated for all of our programs. We've always said how giving our community is, and this is surely an example here. Thank you.
I was going to say the same thing, Keith, we're very fortunate that people are so generous in our community.
I want to also make note, the auditors are in the building. Sometimes feels like they never leave the building, but they are here. Started things right before Christmas, and then came back here basically right after Christmas and been hitting it hard, so there is a copy, I believe you may have got, that the engagement letter, cost is in there, et cetera, so that process gone on, so far, so good. So hopefully, it stays that way. And the audit period is July 1st of '18 through June 30th of 2019, so it'll be fiscal year 19.
When she called me for the, you have to do like an opening interview, okay? And I asked her, because the law says we have to have it done every other year, you can, you can skip a year, okay? And it's like $17,000, so you think, okay, but she said that if you skipped, you really wouldn't save $17,000 because there's certain, you know, just like your taxes, you get billed according to how many forms get filled out. So if they're doing it for two years, there would be some forms that they would have to do, so you would save some, but not nearly what you think you'd save. So it was just a, you know, a question that I asked her about.
And you would think it'd be the other way, right?
Yes.
But I remember Melissa saying the same thing when we had that discussion about skipping years, like, you know, there's really no, there's no advantage to do.
Very little. Very little.
Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, I got to go back to my motions.
Jones, Iden.
Okay. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mauser?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Can we have a motion for employment of certified staff?
I'll move.
Second.
Steph? Galen? Thank you. Recommend to approve Austin Bruski as a certified substitute for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. Any discussion? Short and sweet? Roll call?
Always need subs.
Mrs. Mauser?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Have a motion for employment of classified staff.
I'll move.
Steph?
I'll second.
We'll go with Minda.
I'm fine with that.
Recommend to approve a $100 per occurrence stipend to John Adams and Eric Bassett for snow removal during non-school hours. I hope we don't need this, but I'm very thankful that they do this for us, it's great that we have them now.
Yeah, and they're very conscientious about it. I know when that snow came here, there was one, I forget when it was, but I think it was on Sunday or Saturday or something, I think it was Saturday, and I said, don't do anything, just let it go because it's supposed to be 40 tomorrow and it'll all melt off, and they had already thought about that, so they didn't do anything, they let it go. So they're very conscientious about how they do that, so.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call?
Mrs. Mauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. And then now, motion for services and agreements.
I'll move.
Craig?
Second.
Galen, thank you. Recommend to approve the annual OSBA membership dues from January 2020 to December 2020. This would include electronic versions of the OSBA briefcase, school management news, and virtual transportation supervisor subscriptions. Recommend to approve an audit agreement between Hicksville Exempted Village Schools and the Auditor of the State for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. The cost of services is $17,138. Discussion? Galen, I want, are you getting the emails, the briefcase and that from OSB?
I don't think so.
Okay. Can you make sure he gets that? They're really good, I personally like them.
I didn't even know I had access to.
Yeah, it should have come through your school account.
Yeah, it should come through your school account.
Yeah, I don't-
Yeah. They're almost weekly. I know one comes almost weekly, I think.
School management news is more like about monthly. The OSBA, it's usually about a seven-page, eight-page document or sometimes there's advertising that makes it bigger. School management news is, uh-
I, yeah, and the briefcase is nice.
Yeah, I'd like to have that.
I'll call, should that happen.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Motion for other business.
I'll move.
Minda?
I'll second.
Steph, thank you. Recommend to approve a resolution stating that the board has approved the following annual events on which public funds may be expended for meals, refreshments and amenities for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one calendar year. Christmas gifts, end of school year luncheon, parent teacher conferences, senior citizens volunteer appreciation banquet, teacher appreciation luncheon, teacher in-service workdays and the Veterans Day Assembly. And recommend to approve the two thousand twenty Board of Education scholarship amount of seven hundred dollars.
I wanted to make quickly note that, uh, up in that first part, it should say for two thousand twenty calendar year.
Just one year.
Not the twenty-one, just twenty?
Right.
I think historically, I think maybe it was done on a fiscal year basis or a school year basis. So it had beginning in one year and on to the next, still a twelve-month time period. But this is for the calendar year two thousand twenty.
And then we'll do it in January, moving forward, every January.
Roll call? Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mauser?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. And any old business?
Just the religious release type policy.
Yep. I spoke with Rick Straley today and assured him that that would be on for the February board meeting. The reason it wasn't today, as I was waiting to hear from our Neola representative, and he, um, wasn't gonna get with me till after today, actually, June, or Jan- January thirteenth, so. I contacted him after our board meeting in just December.
And really, we haven't had a-
Forgot about it over Christmas break.
Work time and Christmas, like, and New Year's.
Right.
So, understandable.
Okay, and then discussion?
I wanted to, um, two things. One, just a reminder that, uh, after we get those numbers next week, we'll have to meet next week for a quick meeting. I don't know if you would wanna pick a, look at a date now and pick a time. It'd be like a five-minute meeting.
Will we do it in the morning?
We can do it whenever you want.
Later in the week would probably be better, or midweek, I guess. Thinking like seven-ish?
What time do you need it to be?
A little earlier than seven.
Oh, earlier's fine. I'd rather go earlier anyhow. I mean, six-thirty would be- Talking AM or PM?
AM.
No, AM's good.
So six forty-five because it won't take very long.
Good.
Yeah, it'll be about five minutes.
Perfect.
Ten.
So I, I, I think if we could maybe-
The twenty-third or twenty-fourth?
Maybe the twenty-third or twenty-fourth, if we can just kind of tentatively hold out till-
Twenty-third is better for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, not the twenty-fourth, I won't be able to-
Okay, twenty-third it is. We'll tentatively set that, uh, board meeting for January twenty-third at six forty-five.
Send out something to confirm then?
Yes, I will.
And the only thing we'll be addressing will be?
Approving, uh, the construction documents to be released for bidding.
Just in case you guys don't wanna show up.
That's six forty-five AM. Okay.
The other discussion item, Jen had actually reached out to me about, uh, doing the board agendas online. And I know we had a conversation about that a few years ago. That's certainly something that we can do and I can look into that. I'm not sure what the cost is. I also would like to talk to John about that because I'm thinking we can do that right through our board docs. It's not free, I don't, I'm sure, but then everything would be stored there. We wouldn't have paper copies anymore, so.
My thought behind it was, especially, I was in a cleaning mode and went through stuff and just the piles of paperwork that we have and like five-year forecasts and, you know, I like to be able to have those, to be able to look back. So if we were able to have those in an online format through the board docs, that we could easily jump to, you know, twenty eighteen five-year forecast instead of trying to go through our piles and piles. And even some of the financial reports, you know, right now, to be able to remember what month to go back and look at a specific financial report, if we had those separate, separate in, you know, board docs, I think it would be much easier and more helpful.
Denny said that they do that in Ford County and, uh-
He like it?
Yeah, I think, I believe, I believe so. They come in, they have a laptop and
That's what I wondered.
They bring it up and-
Do we use school laptops?
Yeah, I talked to, um, Jeff and Matt about that. I don't know if I talked to Matt about it or not, but Jeff. And we're not sure, it probably might be iPads, actually.
My only concern with iPads is how small they are.
He'd get the bigger ones.
Okay, just being able to have something larger to see.
I mean, it's gonna be expensive or we gotta go out and buy equipment. I'd rather, I'd just stay with the paper, but if we got existing things.
I'm not gonna do anything till I talk to you guys. First of all, I wanna find out how easy it is and how it functions and who it's done through. So it's nothing we're gonna jump into. I would talk to you guys about it at the next board meeting, if, if I have information by then.
We were kinda wanting to gauge interest in what everybody else thought.
It's fine.
I'm fine going to it.
Yeah.
That's, that's how I've got my brain, is in the laptop, making my job.
So all the attachments and everything would be scanned in as well.
Just keeping the file.
Those, those documents become searchable at that point too, which is handy. You can keyword search your entire- That would be this whole-
Yeah.
And there's some things that I still want a paper copy of, you know, like the five-year forecast. Just because I think sometimes that's easier to go through something on paper. You're circling things, you're looking at comparisons, you're, you know. But it would be minimal compared to the amounts.
You have the capability to print off what you wanted.
Yes.
Instead of certain pages.
Yeah, that's right, Steph. You can print off anything you want, right.
I like that.
I'll get information on that then.
Anything else? Any new discussion?
No executive session?
No. Yes.
So I'll motion to adjourn if we're ready to go.
Steph? Motion to adjourn. Craig, second. Craig, before you leave though, um, Minda and I would like to meet with you. Um, and we're gonna adjourn this meeting until the next board meeting, which will be February seventeenth. That is presidency, are you, we're not all school, okay. So February, well technically, our next regular meeting will be January twenty-third at six forty-five AM. And the full board meeting will be Monday, February seventeenth at five thirty. Roll call?
Mrs. Mauser?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. This meeting is adjourned.